Good morning, everybody. The last day of February, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, Liberty County Commissioners Court, regular meeting of the court. The, uh, let's see, we have a quorum established. Commissioner Whitmire, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Karbowski are present, Commissioner Wilson is with us on Zoom. So we do have a quorum established. We do have business for the court this morning. Um, if you would, let's rise, lift, you lead us to the pages, I'll get the end of this.
Please face the American flag.
I play the American flag. I'm the sixth of America and two republics for which stands one nation.
Please face the Texas flag.
I'm the fifth of Texas. I'm literally twisting the text on today.
Y'all prayed with me this morning. Heavenly Father, as, as always, thank you. Thank you for waking us up this morning. Thank you for helping us to rise and put our feet on the ground. Thank you for this, another opportunity. Another opportunity to, to work and to live in a, in a wonderful, wonderful area of Texas and a wonderful county. Lord, help us to be, to think, to act what is right, because it is right. Lord, make us truthful and honest and honorable in all things. Lord, make us intellectually honest for the sake of right and honor. And Lord, all this without thought, a reward to us, but in helping others, which is our, our job. And they say the things that we do to help others be pleasing unto you. Father, please be with the ones that are in need, ones that are, that are ill, they need healing, they need your helping hand. They need your touch, your grace, your blessings, your wisdom. Lord, please be with them, you know, always, Lord, be with our men and women in uniform and our first responders. And as we grow, Lord, we, we ask that you would walk with them at all times. Thank you again for this day and thank you again for this opportunity. Please forgive us where we failed you and Lord, help us to stand up straight and always do the right thing. We ask these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen. Well, we'll get started here. It, uh, there's no notices and proclamations today. Unless you have anything special over there, you got anybody we need to proclaim today?
Okay, alrighty.
And there are no public comments that I've received this morning. So, uh, we'll move on with that as well. And, uh, we're, I believe the question came up Matthew last night, somebody sent me a note, so what? Don't you have to let people talk? I said, yeah, twenty nineteen, it was, uh, five, five, one point zero seven, one was the local government code. And I said, if you really want to get specific, go to item B. So anyway, I thought I saw that, yeah. So anyway, it was my friend David Taylor was at a meeting and then they weren't allowing somebody to speak. All those moments where you say, I remember, okay. Declare conflicts of interest. Do we have anyone that has any, any reason to declare conflict today? Everybody good? Well, we could always declare conflict somewhere. Yeah. Okay. All right. Let's move right along, consent agenda. If y'all have the opportunity to look at that. And are there any add-ons today?
There's one. See, you can try and software corporations for one thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. And it's an education training in that, I don't know, two fifty there.
Okay.
Are we missing the treasurer's report?
We are. The treasurer's report will be on the first meeting of March. And I have two add-ons. One is for a payoff for Timmy, Timmy Dean. The sheriff's department, the total for that is nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine forty-nine. Say again, Kim?
Nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. And the other one is for Early Rukus, who is also in the treasurer, I mean, the sheriff's office. The total for him is four thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. And also the, uh, I will add on seven point six. The payoff of comp for David Myers has already been paid. That was paid on January the thirteenth.
Ready?
Yes, the comp time.
No more add-on?
That's all I have.
That's all. Got a motion from Greg. Second, David, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, may I accept motion? Pass, ladies and gentlemen. Let's move on over to the regular agenda. Mr. Brown, good morning there, brother Rick. How are you? After I was getting ready to start swinging the bats.
Yeah, I think they were hitting this one really well.
All right.
Finished it and done.
Can't wait to see what happens this year.
It'll be fun.
All right. Consider to approve the waiver of penalties and interest for account number two, five, one, eight, two, eight, SOPO Properties Incorporated, amount of one hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-four cents.
Yes, there was a, uh, somewhere in the line between CAD or the tax office, uh, some kind of clerical mistake was made, timing, some kind of notification, something along those that fits that general.
Yeah.
Really, which is the only recommendation that I ever had the opportunity to ask you to waive those penalties and interests. And I choose those pretty carefully, because I might could, you know, treat somebody different than the rest of the group. But if there is an instance where there was something done by either one of our groups to cause that, we try to be as liberal on that and awarding that back to them, especially after they requested, pay the stuff. And then each of the entities have the opportunity to give it back to them. So we first come to y'all and then we send it, we're going to pass it to all the other entities affected. So that's our typical deal, one seventy-one, forty-four. And recommend that you do approve waiver of that penalty and interest.
All right. What's the court's pleasure?
Making motion to approve today.
Motion from Bruce, second from David, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, may I accept motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number two from Mr. Brown, consider and approve the waiver of penalties and interest for account number three, seven, three, nine, five. Dorothy Simon Tibido, the amount of three hundred and forty-one dollars, ninety-four cents. And this is the same reason.
It's same, same logic and reason behind it, just a different amount, different account for three forty-one, ninety-four. And I recommend waiver of that penalty and interest, I would like to approve.
Second, motion from David, second for Bruce, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, may I accept motion carries? Number three from Mr. Brown, consider and approve the overpay refund of nine thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars, forty-six cents for account number two, 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 eight, six. Customer is Neil Stoser.
And of course, this is a little different situation. We tried to just collect, pay it one time. In his particular case, it was the crossing of the mortgage company paid it. And before we booked his, you know, so his, his actual payment, rate of refund.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, the mortgage company covered the first amount and then the code allows us to refund it to the payer. Uh, so we don't have, uh, double taxation on it. So I again, recommend that you approve refund of that money. Um, since we're just going to pay it one time.
Making motion to approve today.
Motion from Bruce, second from David, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, may I accept motion carries? Thank you, Jim. All right.
And that, that refund is only on amounts twenty-five hundred and, so that's why we don't come with everyone to that.
Right.
Twenty-five hundred catches a lot of them.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Hal. Okay. Uh, number four from, uh, over in the county aldermen's department and, uh, Ms. Zelli's here, correction from last court. On Valentine's Day, uh, consider an approved pay request from Rat Works pertaining to the CD BG grant twenty, zero, six, zero, one, three, C, zero, nine, five. These were these housing buyouts, of course, and that was file ID Lipco one oh three. It's correcting the file ID. And the purchase price of eighty thousand plus closing cost of five thousand and not to exceed eighty-five thousand. Angela, you got anything you need to add to that?
No.
Pretty much straightforward? What's the court's pleasure?
Making motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, may I accept motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number five, uh, from Mr. Guy. Uh, considering approved pay request, again, pertaining to the CD BG grant, and this is file number Lipco one-ten. Purchase price. Excuse me. I don't know about y'all, man, this, this is, this volume is just really something that here. Thank you. My truck is gray, but it's green. Okay. Purchase price fifteen thousand four hundred. Uh, closing cost of five thousand, not, the whole thing not to exceed twenty thousand four hundred.
Making motion to approve.
Second, motion from Bruce, second from Greg, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, may I accept motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number six is from Ms. Harris, uh, county treasurer. Considering through the expiration of our current depository bank contract and going out for bids for a new depository contract. Current depository contract will expire May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Good time to get started, right?
Good time to get started. Yes, I included in the packet, the calendar, um, and the statute on how the timing of what it says to happen. So, um, now's the time to get going, know that Prosperity Bank is our current depository bank. So, um, we give a throw-in on little zoned out packets to every bank and everybody's money and see what we can get back.
You know, past history, actually respond.
And the last time we did this, we only had Prosperity respond, am I right? Yeah, so these will, um, the bids will be due in Harold's office on March the twenty-eighth, or I'm sorry, March the twenty-third. And then we'll bring it back to the law for your review and decision on March the twentieth.
Making motion to approve today.
Motion from Bruce, second from David, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, may I accept motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven from Commissioner Karbowski. Consider to approve the job proposal to paint the Wick office at five oh one Palmer uh, street from Jesse Lopez in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And, um, I guess Bruce, you want to explain it to us real quick?
Yeah, the Wick office, uh, is in bad need of painting over there and because we're having to paint around their schedule, people shutting them down. Uh, can drove the price up a little bit, went out, uh, David went out several bids on this thing. And this is the lowest one we came up with.
Okay.
Making motion to approve.
So, motion from David, second from Greg, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, may I accept motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight from Sheriff Raider. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, sir.
Man, y'all had a nice grand opening out there.
It was good. Thank you for coming.
I don't know, uh, was, was Chief Knox the one doing the cooking on the chili? Was it?
I don't know if he did it. I didn't see him, so, but he's taking credit for it, sir.
I supply all the meat we did.
See, yeah.
Will burn and, uh, he burned it good.
Y'all did great. It was really good. It was good turnout and a nice tour too. So thank y'all. Um, consider and approve the AT&T switch ethernet service with network on demand. Keep proceeding with the dispatch move and a monthly cost of one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And by the way, Sheriff, that, that dispatch is the barriers, man. Yeah.
You did good on that.
I mean, it's, you know, just for the public to understand, when they show up for shift in dispatch, they go in, you lock the door and they don't come out.
Right.
And nobody else can go in.
Right.
So nobody's in there tapping on the glass, willing to talk to somebody. They're focused on their job. That's pretty cool.
That is, give away from the public, they do their job a lot better.
Well, they already do their job great, but I mean, it's going to be even better now. The, uh, how many stations do you actually have out there? It looked like.
The license for currently, or there will be right there, but we could expand to A.
Yeah. That was a plan way back in our, so that's why we bumped up twelve positions, what, seven years ago, trying to get ready for this. Anyway.
Making motion to approve.
I was gonna let Nick explain if you had any questions.
Nick, come on.
Uh, yeah, she asked me, we're, uh, speaking with Motorola and HACC about the move of dispatch and everything. Came to our, uh, attention that we needed a specialized circuit just for Motorola that the county has to do. So unfortunately, we've got the bill on this, but it's a necessity for, I don't know, a bit, you know, it's pretty much what it is, it's, it's monthly.
Yeah. Angela, you got any problem digging up? Let me learn. Maybe it don't.
Question, where's the money from?
Yeah, this was, it's, you know, not only was it sitting here, it was a year, this is a whole thing that no one knew about.
Right.
And then they brought the, hey, we're better back home, sir. Excuse me. Hell, excuse me.
Or bad, we know the way to find the bird.
But I can't tell you right now where the money's coming from, if someone doesn't have it, argue it, but, so.
Well, for expediency's sake, uh, is there any more discussion on this? You gotta have it.
Yeah. Yes. Nick and I meet with these guys, I see them every two weeks and it's like, we're buying all the, it's not included yet. We were all set, March twenty-eighth, we were having our finalized meeting and added it again, you know, hey, is there anything else? Well, by the way, let's see on this line right here, like.
Well, it was under our attention. We had no idea. I heard this a long time ago.
Good.
So it's one of the, just basically dedicated.
Is there a one-time fear or is just just?
Leon, you got any questions?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, there it is. It, uh, what's the court's pleasure?
Making motion to approve.
Hey, morning.
You did? Okay. Well, Bruce made that notion, so David can make the second.
I jumped the gun.
That's all right. At least we, uh, had the opportunity for a good explanation. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, may I accept motion carries? It reminds me of that song by Dan Hickson, Hot Licks. Remember them? Where's the money? I've heard it. Okay. Funny how those things just kind of come to you. Number nine, uh, from Maggie Poston, Captain McCarthy, County Attorney's Office. Discuss, consider approving the recommendation of the Liberty County Water Control Improvement District number five, which we could normally call WCID five. Selection Review Committee to award by resolution, rees and nickels incorporated for engineering services for the cities twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Texas Department of Agriculture, C, uh, Texas CD BG. That's a grant to provide application preparation, engineering services if awarded. Okay.
Like city?
No, that's C I D, not.
It says for the cities. I didn't know if it ever said what city.
I don't know why it said city.
Is it supposed to be county?
Thank you, city, liberty. Or the service. The service is for Liberty, but I don't know why it said A. I think that's probably typo. And, uh, it should be either say county or WCID. I don't really. Um, I mean, what we would ask for is an amendment to the resolution that the WCID has, has provided uh, showing that they are the ones who went out and bid at an arcing line of bidding and rushing services statute. It's, uh, governing, that's not the county. So, you know, with the court's motion to approve with that amendment, I will adjust the language to say that WCID, not the county, went out and, and sought out and discussed and, uh, negotiated with the engineering firm.
Angela?
Right, we already, um, we discussed this and, um, I just wanted to say, because, uh, I mean to say, whenever we do these cash through grants, um, the bulk of that weight falls on the auditor's office, uh, someone's approaching office, depending on, uh, how the bidding is being done. And I think this one was a potential of a five hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, and when that happens, you know, we're, in this case, because we gave them permission to go out and do their own bidding. Um, Harold has reviewed, uh, some of it, right? So you've reviewed some of what they provided on Friday. We get it and see if they follow the rules. Um, and I just want to say, the TDA grant, the last one we did, uh, was for whole country water. And, um, the administrative firm back then was wanting to finish it. We got a huge, uh, like book of things that, you know, the auditing firm, the desk audit review came back from TDA and said, you didn't follow all the rules. And I just want to be sure that we all know that when we do pass through grants, um, at the end of the day, it comes back to Liberty County. And so we're not familiar with the administrative, um, part, uh, services that they've chosen. But, um, in lieu of that, what we'll do is, uh, we won't pay out money until we receive money. And, uh, by law, we should have three days to pay it once we get it in. And that way, we're not, we're not left with something if something didn't go on and. Um, I think that changing the wording will help because right now the state Liberty County did all the things, you know, telling me to keep them. So, um, I think we can pass it based on that.
Mrs. Farm was a district since some stuff last Friday, uh, like their ads and their valuation committee, the general. But I want to get with her, she wrote responses to get everything they did, start a folder, do it like we had done it. Make sure, and it looks, looks okay from the surface, but I'll have everything, yes. I think it'll be, I think it's gonna be okay.
So motion to approve, um, with Matthew making amendments that need to be based on this?
All right. Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Any questions?
I think, Jay, I think we need to table this. I think it's a necessity for us to table this. I think we need to get the verbiage correct and sit down and let the court, to include myself, discuss this with county attorney. And then I want to hear about what's taking place. Um, it's not that I don't trust the, um, the thoughts of Matthew or the auditor's office, but I'd like to, I'd like to, to discuss the, uh, take this and table it for the time being so that, uh, uh, we could, um, learn a little more about if there's any repercussions for the county on this.
Well, we have a motion and a second now. Having an argument for a, to table. So we need to discuss this. Any further discussion on the, the point? I mean, are y'all okay with it?
We're pretty good, Matthew. I, we're, I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm, I will tell you, and Angela will tell you too, that there's risk involved in these password grants. And we can't, uh, I tell you that we have reviewed and everything through this point to ensure that there is, uh, little, at this point, it, it is an unknown. So I understand we're doing some mostly time broad. And, and I'm fine with that. If we, if we want to table and come back in two weeks after, uh, we've had a chance to do a little bit more than that's fine with me too. I think that's probably the, uh, the better part of the discussion.
What are our panelists on this plan?
April 11.
And maybe really first, if we.
Next meeting is March.
We don't have any application, yeah. We're just trying to get everything in line, make it.
Yeah. Yeah, but you have, but you have to have an engine firm that has your, the grant administration firm, uh, in mind.
This grant has these people here to help us put that together.
Yeah, of course, of course.
And, and. And then our engineering firm also.
Yes.
To help us put everything, get it, this package together. And the timeframe is running out. That's why we're looking, trying to get it as a day. And then we can sit down and work this stuff out. We didn't write anything, we had to, we had to.
Oh, of course.
No, they have to, of course, you know.
Uh, we're with you. So just so you're aware, we have been in uncomfortable circumstances in the past with some of these experts.
I understand. I did, uh, you want to teach from the floor too, you know, I understand. That's the reason I'm going ahead.
So, um,
Is there a possibility that we could have a special meeting next week if we can get all these issues clarified?
I, I think that's probably best course of action.
That give you all time? Angela?
Yeah, we have. If we can have a special meeting, meaning if and only if we can, I'll reset my motion.
I think my understanding is that we don't think that, that we won't have, no commitment for court fees to get the application approved as soon as I was banned from Friday.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, so what we're just, well, we're gonna have to do is have a special meeting. I don't think called a special meeting. We've been having a special meeting in the, within the next week, is what we're saying.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, so that gives us a little bit more time, but we can definitely, that way you can go ahead and, well, we need, yeah, we needed. No, well, the amendment, so you can talk. But it's fair, you know, honestly, it's Angel and I know it's signed up to the better part of the same we're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it does give them time to do that and, uh, and do it, so, you know, rather than that, you're still.
All right. Bruce, you want to change that to a table?
Um, no, I'm gonna leave it like this.
Yeah. All right. So we have a motion, um.
I think we need to table it. What kind of news?
Well, wait a minute, we ain't called for a vote yet. If you have some discussion, I'm, I'm open for discussion right now.
I mean, Matthew's the counsel, so I think we need to.
Yeah.
Just vote it down and then do any motions.
Okay, all right.
You got a vote on this one, Doug. You got a motion.
I'll agree. So right now we have a motion from Bruce, second from Greg, to pass. With some, uh, some discussion to table. Okay. Well, we're gonna look at it that way. Uh, all in favor, say aye. So we have all of those in. Nay.
No.
Nay. And I'm gonna vote nay simply because I want to bring it back up and table this. And then bring it back up for a special meeting next week. And we will call a special meeting next week.
I'm, I bet Dee can get it out in this afternoon. I suppose Monday.
All right. So that, that does fail. So now we need a motion to table.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Make the motion, we table?
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion from Leon, second from Bruce to table. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, we're gonna table this thing and bring it back up next week. Uh, James, if there's anything y'all need to get with Matthew and with Harold and Angelo, bring, bring your shopping cart, okay? That's what we're gonna need, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. And thank y'all, gentlemen. Glad we guys just worked out. Number ten, uh, discuss, consider approving recommendation of Liberty County. Discuss, consider approving recommendation of Liberty County Water Control Improvement District number five. Selection Review Committee to award trailer and associates incorporated a resolution. A contract for administrative services pertaining to the application and implementation, if awarded. Of the county's twenty, we didn't say cities this time. Twenty-four Texas Department of Agriculture Texas C D B G grant. And authorize the execution contract on behalf of W C I D five. Again, we need to table this one too.
That's correct.
And about both at the same time.
I made, I made the motion, we table.
Second.
Got a motion Leon, second for Bruce to table. All the favor say aye. Likewise, nay. Then that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Put that along. Number eleven, Mr. Douglas. Going up and busy for a while, David. It's gonna take a little bit. Uh, number eleven is to request for authorization to solicit for engineering services. For the whole freshwater supply district water well project that is being funded through the ARPA and. Add this project to the county's existing ARPA grant management agreement with Grant Works.
That pretty much covers it, Jeff.
Pretty much covers it right there.
This is a project that the court has previously approved out of ARPA funds, uh, up to one million dollars.
Right.
Um, we had to somebody again the last time, but the wording was insufficiently detailed. And so we have brought it back. In fact, there are all four of these items I have today used same previous, but they were taken. Uh, we asked you to go to improve the whole project, all fresh water supply district water well project. And that we add them to our visiting contract. And authorize the purchasing department to see, I mean, we need to. I can motion to approve.
Let me ask Carol first, please. Um, are we gonna do this now? Are we gonna wait until?
Yeah, Grant Works needs to look over before we actually do this.
I think there were two items on this agenda that we were gonna bring to Grant Works on our next meeting, which would be the seventh. Um, so that we can get fully approved by them. Um, it had to do with the price. And I don't think we've received that price back yet from all freshwater.
That's just where they were gonna get a second attitude.
Right.
That's not on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pertains to this also.
Isn't this just solicit for engineering services? Can we go ahead and solicit for that services?
I'm gonna ask Carol about that.
Yeah, we're gonna do that until Grant Works looks over everything we're doing and approves it.
I think we need to wait more time. Your next meeting is on the seventh. It's actually at one o'clock. So, um, it's gonna be after, uh, the next court. So I don't know if we need to, we're comfortable getting written, uh, wording from maybe two people off of our Grant Works team. Say that we're good to go, um, before then.
I prefer that.
If we could get that, maybe we could do it on the next court.
Yeah.
Change my motion to table.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, a motion, uh, from Bruce and second Leon to the table. Any further discussion?
I'm trying.
All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, uh, request for authorization issue notice proceed. For engineering services to L J A Engineering for the City of Harden wastewater project is being funded through ARPA. Maybe this will be a little bit easier.
I do too. Well, this is a pre-approved project from the court. And, uh, we have gone through all the motions on this and, uh, an engineer has been solicited by the purchasing department. Uh, they've been vetted out. Uh, this particular engineer is L J A Engineering of Beaumont.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so ready to move forward now by issuing them a notice to proceed on the project. And that's what we're asking your permission to do today is to issue a notice to proceed to L J A Engineering. For the hardened wastewater project and that's funded not to exceed two million dollars out of the ARPA.
Moving through. Thank you.
What's that, Greg?
Yep.
Made the motion. Bruce made the second. Any further discussion? David, Leon, anybody? Bueller? Doesn't. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number thirteen. Uh, request for authorization to issue notice to proceed for engineering services to Schaumburg and Polk Engineering. For the City of Ames wastewater project is being funded through ARPA. And this is just like the last.
It's just exactly like previous item, except the project is for Ames. And so, um, the spark basket, ladies and gentlemen.
Motion to approve.
Sorry. Motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve. Any further discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number fourteen, consider approving the transmittal. From the whole freshwater supply district stating that funds are in hand to take care of any cost overruns. On their water well grant that is being funded from ARPA money. This, will this letter be acceptable or will the court wish Mr. Poston to draft an agreement? I believe that's something.
That connection is, is Mr. Poston's back.
Yeah.
We just need to table this on.
I think so.
Making motion to table.
Got a motion from Bruce to table, second from David. Any further discussion? All the favor say aye. Likewise, nay.
Discussion.
Sir?
There was some discussion on this with Grant Works.
Yes.
And they have recommended that we go with a drafted agreement out of the county attorney's office.
Good enough. All right, there you go. Job security over there, Kathy. All righty. Number fifteen from Mr. C. Come on up here, Mr. C. You know, Aggie baseball is looking a little better this week. I guarantee you. Uh, consider and approve soliciting for bids for road materials.
Okay, I was talking last week that, uh. Some of our bids for limestone base and trap rock or things like that.
Trap rock.
Um, that Vulcan who are only better products, uh, so we don't have something, an alternative to go to that. We're not gonna be able to provide it for the rest of this year. So I tried to contact them or did contact them, ask them to send me something officially saying that, which they haven't done. And I know two, two precincts have ordered limestone base after that. So right now until we have something from them, uh, because we have a contract with them for the rest of this year. Until I get something from them, you know, we'll just table this. You ever get a date somewhere?
No, but I've, I've had four thousand tons of chip rock, um, ordered since the end of last year. And they're telling me, Vulcan's telling me now that we can forget anything in twenty, in twenty twenty-three because they promised everything to Tex-.
Yeah.
Only I thought was kinda.
Yeah.
Underhanded, um, kind of leave us hanging.
I haven't received any of that written from them.
No, I haven't received anything. This is just verbal from Mr. Carter, which is ourselves.
Y'all could, if you wanted to, you could do this contingent on us getting that notice and I'll bring it back to court. So that way we start preparing in case we need it in this.
Well, this, I mean, the letter is one thing, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't get any material, period. So, I mean, we need to do something now.
Well, we have a proven, I'll, I'll keep working on, try to get something from them and writing saying, so we can, uh. Boy, that, uh, contract.
Making motion to approve.
Hang on.
No, we're not gonna table number fifteen. We're gonna approve fifteen.
Can they notice from Vulcan Materials canceling the contract? What are they doing?
No, this is just a, so this is bids for, uh, road materials.
Okay, but you don't want it ending notice from.
Not, 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 not. We won't, we won't do it before I bring it back.
Okay, there was a motion from Bruce to, to accept. He made the second.
Oh.
You did Greg, okay. Woo. So now we got a motion, a second to approve. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen, Mr. C. Discuss and approve contracts for auto autopsy. Okay. Transports and pulper cremations. That's gonna be an R F D number twenty-three oh seven. Ordered by Commissioners Court on one twenty-four twenty-three. Harold?
Yeah, I wanted to prove this, uh, as far as what the rates are gonna be. And I'd hope to have the signed contracts ready to put in court records, so I can report record, but I don't have them yet, so I'm gonna table it. Hopefully next court will have them.
Yeah. Is everybody? Back there on sign up?
I think so, yeah. We're good.
Okay. What's court's pleasure?
Moving to tables.
Hi.
Motion Greg, second Dave, table. Any further discussion? Leon, you got anything?
No.
You good? All right. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen, Mr. C. Consider and approve list of. Vehicles. It's not the Spanish version, okay? To be used as trade-in for the Community Supervision Correction Department, also known as adult probation.
Okay, these are some vehicles that adult probation has over there. They haven't used in a long, long time. They want to trade in all of them. On another newer vehicle. Um. Used to be years ago when I was auditor, they used to, the state used to say they had to follow our purchasing laws and whatever. And then now they're telling them they don't have to. They can do whatever they want, but just as a precaution, these are the three they're trading in. So I put it on here just so. If somebody from the state comes back later and said, you know, should have approved by court, we'll have to approve. You need to trade in, y'all pretty big trade in. Uh, these were, I think, purchased with their state money. Still, it's one, it's just a precaution.
Making motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second with Greg to approve for discussion. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along. Number eighteen, Mr. C. Consider and approve purchase of a washer and dryer for the jail. And, uh, I know DT's here.
Oh, good. They, they had a dryer and then they caught on fire. So he, he asked us to get a, a bid. This is through Bible work for a dryer, but he asked us to also look for washer. And he explained to you why they might need a washer also.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. When I got here seven and a half years ago, the laundry equipment was junk.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the washing machines, uh, were, we got some. More amount of junk we gifted to it from Geo before they left.
Mm-hmm.
So unfortunately, we didn't have a dryer prior Friday night. Friday before last, you gotta drive a little bit. And so now we're down to one dryer, I'm sorry, one washer and no dryer. With all the clothes, the, the bedding, the towels, um, so I need some new equipment.
If you look on the third page, the total for installation and for the washer and dryer is twenty-two thousand, seven seventy-nine and ten cents.
What is it, Harold?
Twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine, ten cents.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You got good money, okay.
Very conservative with my budget this year.
They do have the money, I think. It'll just take a lot out. We've gone five months into it. It'll take a lot of your budget, but. Angela and I discussed this. There might be a possibility to take it out of commissary. There's a lot of commissaries that I'm sure is.
Got room for a close one.
That's pretty nice days out here. Blowing the breeze.
Making motion to approve.
Okay. Motion from Bruce, second Leon to approve. Any further discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, DT.
And ladies.
Would you like to introduce your new member of your group?
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mark. So I would be with the Mark Jones.
All right, Mark, come on up. Let everybody get a good look at you. We don't sheriff cheating you because he doesn't know who you are.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Mark, you came to us from T D C J, correct?
Sir.
And you were, uh. You were a manager supervisor at High Tower, weren't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And with regions.
And we're, okay. Region three.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's pretty, uh, lengthy time you had there then, no doubt. How many years you have with it?
Twenty-two total.
Twenty-two years total.
Yes, sir.
All right. Sheriff, I think you make a good hand over there.
He's a mechanic, sir.
He's a mechanic. Man. Go ahead and see if we can get Angela to buy some extra tools.
All right.
Okay, all right. Good deal. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate you coming. Number nineteen from Mr. C. Consider and approve the purchase of a new vehicle for thirty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents from Lake Country Chevrolet. Utilizing tips contract number twenty-one zero nine zero seven to be paid from the sheriff's forfeiture fund.
Yeah, we can't find a bunch of big hit for one time, but Mr. Hendricks really good about finding one or two here and there. Yeah. So they want to buy that and head out of there for.
All right, Sheriff, thank you for coughing up some money there. Sure appreciate it. Angela sure appreciates it too.
I'll get a joke for you.
Thanks.
You got a motion from David, second from Leon to approve. Any further discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty. For Mr. C. Consider and approve solicitation of asphalt overlay services to be paid from ARPA funds.
Okay, this has been going on for a while.
Yep.
Yes, it has. Grant Works had worked with us. We had to have an engineer, uh, because of federal requirements and all that. David Douglas got involved in it, started talking to him and, and, and tried to explain to him that it really wasn't like a, replacing a whole road, basically repairing road, uh, road, uh, works. And so he talked to the L J A engineer about them, uh, drawing up some specs and bringing the court to have a court. Uh, approval as our official specs. Last year we went out for bids for this asphalt services. And L J A helped us write those specs, but they really hadn't been approved by court. So when we get the official ones, bring them back to court. Approval and then Grant Works said we should be okay to go ahead and use ARPA. Go out and bid. Just take a little while to get the right answer, but yeah. Thank David on that, that he.
It's okay.
I'd be warned now, I think.
Well, I hope it's a misunderstanding between us and Grant Works and his level of court.
Correct.
So I was glad that they, they take a word from that.
All right.
Making motion to approve.
Uh, motion from Bruce, second from Leon, you approve. Any further discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-one from Sheriff. Consider approve Liberty County Sheriff's termination of lease agreement for office space with Smith Tilling. Located at twenty-one nine six six state highway three twenty-one in Cleveland, Texas due to the construction, the sheriff's office new building.
Yes, sir. We were paying for this out of the senior fund.
Yes.
We have some spare offices. We moved them down here until we can get the place up to plug road subdivisions built. So we just need to terminate. We have terminated the lease and I just want to make the Commissioners Board aware of that.
Yes, sir.
Making motion to approve.
Sorry. Motion Leon, second from Greg. Any further discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Number twenty-two. Thank you, Sheriff. Number twenty-two, uh, from Mr. Pope and Ms. McCarty over in County Attorney's Office. Consider and approve bid proposal. Number two from Byron McDowell Construction Incorporated in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars eighty-three cents. For county attorney's remodel. Okay, that's in your office here.
This is for the office here.
Okay.
And this is the, the second of two, uh, bids that we received. Or, or, or half, as I should say, the second half of the project.
Right.
Uh, it was getting with the, uh, other one, we're getting close to fifty, which is also our budget for it.
Mm-hmm.
So we wanted to make sure that there weren't, there isn't any likely that the cost overrun before we came back to court and asked them to be on some route.
Okay.
At this point, where, where it's ready to go.
It's a budget amount anyway.
It is, yes.
Okay. And it's a long time coming too.
And see it on the very appreciate it.
Make the motion we approve.
Right.
Motion from Leon, second from David. Any further discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. This next item, number twenty-three, uh, Senator approved plan of equal distribution of accumulated money. Let acquisition fund, I will ask that be moved to the executive session, since we already have another item on the executive session today. It, uh, I think there should be some discussion on this.
Making motion to go to the executive session.
Get it and great. And said. Five, five, seven, one, consultation with attorney and then also.
Five, five, one, oh, eight, seven. None of us.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Okay.
Constipation with the attorney and then.
Yeah. Five, five, one, zero, seven, one, and five, five, one, zero, eight, seven. Motion from Greg, second. I think that was from Bruce.
No, Leon.
From Leon?
Yes.
That was you, Leon? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. It's okay. It's now uh, nine fifty-six. And we are in session. All right, we're back in regular sessions, 11:20. Officially it was 11:20. It still is, according to the computer clock. And, uh, first item we have up was discussion and potential action regarding ongoing negotiations. Uh, proposed economic development agreement presented chapter 381, Texas Local Government Code between Liberty County and Liberty County Solar Project LLC. And there really is no action that we need at this time.
No.
Okay. We're gonna take no action. Uh, should we go on that, Matthew, please?
Make a motion, take no action.
Yeah. Okay, Bruce, need a second.
Second.
Second from David. All in favor, say aye. All right. All right. Now, the next is consider and approve a plan of equal distribution of all accumulated money in the land acquisition fund. And.
I make a motion, we don't take anything out of the land acquisition fund this year. Second.
All right.
Okay.
I can't hear y'all, Jay.
Okay.
I can't.
Okay, okay.
Leon, did you hear the motion?
Yeah, I heard the motion, but it went, uh, silent. It got silent after that.
Okay.
In light of the motion. I don't have all the facts in front of me. I understand your, your, your points. You know, it, uh, Angela has some numbers there. I haven't even had a chance to look at those. It, uh, what our projection is for the end of the year, what that account's gonna be, and then one of the, some of the other things we have. I would like for us to table that long enough for us to get all the facts out again, and we can go back out here and rehash this one more time. I don't mind it a bit, but I want to be sure that I know exactly what's there and what the points are. And it, uh.
Well, Jay, she's got the numbers in front of her. Why don't you look at them and then we'll take it from there?
Yeah.
Instead of revisiting this.
Yeah.
You got a motion, a second, all right. All right, I'm just gonna put this out there for y'all to discuss.
And your motion was to leave the land acquisition fund account as is for the current fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce to leave it, leave it alone this year. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. I'm gonna pass that and say aye. We're gonna go ahead and leave it alone, since I don't have opportunity to look at it further.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn. You got a.